I hope to the meeting to the public this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so.
Okay, just a couple of quick items. I do apologize for missing the meeting last month. I had some health issues which hopefully are getting better. I did want to quit, I'm sure I've mentioned it, but we had, I think, a pretty good meeting with Joe Drew and get all our questions answered on the computerization and the future of that. I'm available anytime to do that, so, you know, sometimes sitting down face to face with individuals at the county level is the right way to go. Secondly, there was some discussion at one of the earlier meetings. I was telling you that we are considering going into a tobacco-free policy at all county sites. And there was somebody on the board had asked a question about it and I said I would get back to you. We're actually starting that committee and this might be something that the village is interested in too, I don't know. But if you probably follow the news, a number of areas are going totally tobacco-free. For us, you know, Clinton Community College is also, it's a relatively controversial thing, but we're looking at it. In any event, the next meeting is Monday, April 5th, on the first floor of the community room at the government center. And if you are planning on attending, and I am, if you just let me know, they'd like to get some sense of whether or not other municipalities are interested, so I'll be, if you let me know on that. The only thing, the only other thing I have, a couple of quick things. On the security, I think government center has been, we've increased our camera system down there and it's working quite well. You know, there was some discussion about the mural and so on, and we've got whole camera system set up and there's TV setups, both in Mike Gill's office and also in the village I did want to comment briefly on the Cape Air, Hogan Air situation. You probably read about that in paper. I really liked Cape Air. I went down there planning initially to vote to support them. We'd asked them for a bigger plane, which they have some, and they said no. And it was a real blow to all of us who believe that the county is ready to move ahead. And just on a strictly financial basis, and this is one of those things that I think as we see movements by local political groups and so on, and everybody wants to save money, you know, we get $4.50 for every person that goes through the county airport. That's what the county makes, $4.50. And that's $328,000 a year. That's a lot of money. Now, that's with Cape Air with its eight-passenger vehicle having four people in it. What we've done is we now have a 34-passenger vehicle. And even if that vehicle is half-full or even a quarter-full, we're going to increase the revenues substantially down there. And I know a lot's been written about the issue of, you know, Cape Air did a wonderful job and so on, and I've read all that stuff and I've gotten a few calls from people in the town and also in the villages and so on. You know, for me, I wanted to stay with Cape Air. I believed that their model was a good one for the first two years, but after that, they were still going to give us essentially the same flights. And I think Plattsburgh is on the verge of expanding. And I don't, yes, we have to cater to the Clinton County business, but Canadian business is big. We are a suburb of Montreal. That's the way it's being marketed. And Hogan Air is willing to put up $50,000 in marketing along with the Chamber of Commerce. So for all those reasons, I mean, you have safety issues. I like two pilots. I think it's a good idea to have two pilots on a plane instead of one. So there were a host of reasons why I voted the way I did. I know it was controversial, but the bottom line is that I think the county is going to move ahead on this issue and also their revenues are going to increase. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I just want to ask you about the parking at the airport.
Yes.
Everybody parks for free, right?
That's right.
Is that, you think that's a draw because of the people staying?
I don't think there's any question about it, but I also think that we're up to 70,000 in planements and I do think that when we reach a threshold of, you know, hopefully in the future, maybe double that or so, we will be looking at the issue of parking. But, you know, it isn't just, there's been a number of people that have written letters on that issue too. You know, you need somebody to collect it. You need somebody to police it. You need somebody, you know, you need to create all, it isn't just, well, if we charge everybody $10 or whatever a day, you're going to see that profit. And right now, the war is, and especially for Canadians who come down, incidentally, many of them spend a night in Plattsburgh. Our, you know, bed tax that we put on, it's gone through the roof in terms of revenues, $450,000 last year. And part of that is because these people that are flying out, these 70,000 people, at least half of them probably spend a night down there. That's revenue into the county coffers. So, you know, I guess I would say that I think the parking is, we're going to look at it again, but right now in our advertising in that Montreal area, the thought that they can come down here and just park for free and leave it for 25 days, I mean, we have the sheriff's patrols in there and so on, is a real draw. And I think that's what's pushed that employment number up dramatically versus the cost, for example, what door valve, which is, you know, I don't, is it $15 a day?
I don't know, it's 12 or 15, depends if it's long-term or...
Yeah, okay. So anyway, so we will be looking at it, but probably not right now.
Back to your smoking policy.
Yes.
I believe the village has no smoking in any of its facilities.
Okay.
Now, they don't have it on grounds. What we did do is remove the no-smoking here from, in front of the village, out to the end of the sidewalk.
Okay. No smoking on any of the grounds down here?
No, just out to the end of the sidewalk.
Okay.
But I know that's become an issue and I...
It is an issue.
I, I think it's going to be very controversial.
Well, you know, I think it's something that the statistics are in in terms of, you know, whether or not people should have to walk through that even in an open area. And, you know, we haven't made a decision, but I just, I felt like the villages and the towns might want to get on board in terms of being able to say, well, you know, let's see what the county is going to do. Let's see the methodology they're going to use for enforcement and so on, and then bring it back and see if it's something they're interested in, but...
They're also going to include chewing?
Pardon me? Tobacco?
Tobacco.
Uh, no, not to my knowledge. This is just smoke.
You could not just bet that, but you can't, I'm sorry.
Well, we had a problem here and they said, hey, look, the kids are down here, they're playing hockey or skiing. We don't want them to be exposed to smoke.
Right.
Okay, that's, you know, it's your place, we'll do what you want. So that's pretty much what we've done here.
And people have criticized that.
No, though they wanted us to go that way. We had problems with a few employees that were smoking.
Oh, okay.
And they go, we don't want that around the kids. Hey, it's your place, you know. So that's kind of what we've done here.
Well, this would be on all county property and needless to say, out at the highway department, just in an area where we have a lot of employees who smoke outside the building, if it's campus-free tobacco, meaning that any property is owned by Clinton County will be tobacco-free, that's not going to settle. And so, I mean, I don't think anybody thinks that this is just going to slide right through. On the other hand, if we go through a process and we think this is the way to go, we'll have those public hearings. I remember when I was mayor, I think it was in 1980, and we had that open container law. And that was something that was extremely controversial in this village. You may remember that, George.
Oh, yeah.
They were about, I don't know whether you could get 100 people upstairs in the old village office, but they were all there. And we had informally talked about it the last meeting. Nobody said a word. It sounded like it was going to go through. And all of a sudden, it was two to two, and I'm sitting there casting the deciding vote. But the businessmen downtown believed very strongly that we needed, the young people were drinking. And, you know, we needed some way to be able to police that. And so we decided to pass it. Any county infringe upon any individual liberties, you're going to have an issue.
Both sides of the court.
What's that?
Both sides of the court.
That's right, absolutely.
Against the...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If you thought you got a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting. You all have copies. Do you have any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the regular meeting of March 1st, 2010.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. They all have copies. Do we have any additions or deletions?
We have three of them this evening. The first one is the Board of Press. It's $1,010. It is for quasi-incentive souvenir books, which will be offset by a grant. Our next one is Elan. It is, the amount is $500. It's invoice number three for the services associated with designing the gateway and wayfinding signs for the village of Rouse's Point appearing in 21010. It's also offset by a grant. The last one is FIA Card Services. That's the credit card bill. It's various departments. The total is $2,199.91. And it's registration fees for the water and sewer plant. I think it's the New York Water Association. And envelopes, NICOM and LIMPAA unit expenses.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first letter I have is addressed to Mayor Rivers. It says, "Northeastern Clinton Central School District would like to request the use of the Rouse's Point tennis court located at the Civic Center. The requested times would be Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 5:15 p.m. beginning March 16th through May 31st of 2010. The matches start the week of April 19th, and we request that the windscreen be put up prior to that date if possible." Mr. Joey and Gilroy.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow Northeastern Clinton to use the tennis courts.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second item I have came in a few weeks ago and it was from our science engineer. It's from Ryan Davies. He did a structural stability analysis. He states that we have, we did a visual assessment and structural stability analysis for the reference project, which was the bandstand out into the lot over here on the grounds. He observed that the reference building is approximately 24 by 24 with the studing. He spelled out the pressure-treated decking and everything that was on it. He said that the structure did not have a foundation or anchoring system due to the architectural makeup, three sides, a roof and open front. His recommendation was a structural analysis was not included, and completed on the timber components of the building. However, it appeared that the building was well-built and standard construction practices were utilized. Uplift forces were analyzed for the structure. The analysis indicated that for a 90 mile an hour wind, the structure has a possibility to overturn. Therefore, it is recommended that the structure be anchored using Manta Ray Earth Anchor Systems Model MR68 or equal. These anchors should be installed on all corners of the building and deinstalled per the manufacturer's recommendations. And for your reference, he did attach those anchors. So that report was a request that we had an engineer look at the building if it was equal to the bandstand and the...
If we got a 90 mile an hour wind, it could be more than that bandstand, but...
You got that bad.
That was the same stuff.
And we had already, we had already taken the stance that we were going to anchor that this spring.
Yes.
We couldn't do it last fall.
Right.
So...
That was the same thing you talked about, right? Was that? Aren't you going to put tubes or something though, or no?
Anchors.
Oh, anchors, that's right.
Like pole anchors?
Yeah.
That we guide poles back with?
Yeah.
Basically, it's about the same way.
Yeah.
The next letter I have came into the mayor and the village board. It says, "On March 5th, 2010, I was recognized at the Women of the World Citizen of the Year by Local Lodge 462. At the awards banquet, I was honored with the resolution that was passed by your municipality congratulating me for this honor. I want to thank you for doing this as well as Deputy Mayor Brian Jefferson for making this presentation on behalf of the village of Rouse's Point. Although I am not a resident of the village, I have had the privilege of working in the village of Rouse's Point for most of my adult life. I do not take for granted the hard work by the mayor, village board and all the departments and residents that make Rouse's Point a quality community. It is my sincere wish that I can stay employed within the village of Rouse's Point for the remainder of my working life. Thank you very much for taking the time to do this. My family and I really appreciate this honor." This is from Chris Trumbull. The next letter I received was, "As youth recreation leader for the village of Rouse's Point, I would like to recommend that we sponsor an instructional bowling program for the youth in our village. As part of the recreational programs, we offer free of charge. I have discussed this with the recreation coordinators for the village and the town of Champlain, who also support the idea. In discussion with Ms. Ellen Goyette, the manager of the local bowler, we have agreed on a proposed program. The 10-week season will begin in mid-October and end in mid-December. It will be held on Sunday afternoons from 1:00 until 3:00. The cost would be a dollar per pair of shoes, rental plus $5 for two hours of lane rental. If 20 kids participate, the total cost would be about $450 divided by the three contributing communities. Transportation would be the responsibility of the parents. Ms. Goyette has an employee who worked with the high school bowling team who will provide instruction to the participants at no extra charge. They will be divided into high school bowling, excuse me, they will be divided into age groups 5 to 9 and 10 enough. And we also hope to include our high school bowling team in providing instructional assistance as a community service project. I will be responsible for coordinating registration and publicity for the program through our schools and local newspapers. With the increased support of keeping kids active in that fact, bowling is a lifelong sport. I believe this will offer an excellent opportunity for our youth to learn and an activity they can enjoy for years to come. Thank you in advance for your support." This is from Jan Letourneau, our youth recreation leader. So I don't, I know that she doesn't want your approval to...
I make a motion to encourage the youth recreational leaders to start the bowling program.
Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Discussion.
$150.
Approximately, depending on how many children...
That's for a week, right?
It's, no, that's for the year.
For the year.
Yeah, it could be more or less, a little bit more, a little bit less than that, depending on how many children.
But it said 10 weeks.
Yeah.
And at $25 a lane, I figured that out, $450 each week.
Times 10 weeks, so $25 times 10 weeks. Five lanes at $25 times 10 weeks.
To divide it by three.
$350.
I think it's three.
If I don't do anything, anything we can do to...
More things for the kids, the better.
Sunday afternoon, not skiing. They're not playing hockey. They have a day off. They're studying.
Well, that's...
They get a break from their study.
That's $30 each for each one of the partners.
Sure, they don't pay right now. We'll take it out on another call.
Mayor's doubled.
That's right, double.
Take it from the trustees' fund.
Double stamps.
That's all I have.
Make a motion on that for the next year?
He's already made the motion.
I know, but take it from the trustees' fund of the paperwork.
I think the treasurer can find $150. Probably take it out of my eye, but that's all right. Any other discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, vote, vote by you to sign by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Report of the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on the agenda, I've got a letter from Office of Emergency Services, the intermediate ICS, Expanding I-300 Course will, is being taught at 16th Emergency Service Drive, May 4th and 5th, 2010, from 8:00 to 4:30 p.m. This is basically for managers and whatever. Probably Brian or somebody else, other people should attend it. We'll discuss that later. See if I can, somebody to go.
Are they going to meetings?
Yeah, thanks. Okay, second thing is, we got the letter today on the New York Power Authority Tree Program. Again, this year. I think the price went up from last year, but that's all right. Everything else has gone up. Buy one for $85 and you get one free. So you get two trees. Does it say what kind of trees? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Maple spruce, flowering choice, honey locust, little leaf, le见过. And if you want the bigger tree, it's $170. You get the second one for $85. They're not so generous on the second. But anyway, I'm putting it out there. When do we have to have the order in, Dr. Carroll? You know?
March 22nd.
March 22nd.
Boy, they're, we're not giving us much time, are they?
It is not.
Can you tomorrow get an ad in the paper or try to? But people know it. But I know there's, there's people interested that have asked me about it.
Cornerstone was a couple too, so I should get a, I'll talk to Deanne tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, I'll get it in, I'll try to get it in.
I think St. Patrick's Church is interested in selling those.
Yeah.
And we've got $1,000 in the budget, so we'll be buying lots.
We bought 10 last year and got 10 free. We got 20 trees, I believe, last year, so probably be right around the same.
A lot of trees, that's a lot of trees.
You'd be surprised. Not quick to go. There's a lot of trees that cut down in this village.
Still replacing from the ice storm.
Yeah. Anyway, all right, that's for information only. Anybody that... I got two things under stuff in that here. Oh, yeah. Remind everybody of the attic insulation program that's not going right now, and also the infrared camering of your homes. If you call the village office, you can put on a list and between now and then, whatever, it'll get done. We have no control of when it'll get done. We have sent two IEP, I missed the names already. They'll be sending their engineers up to check them homes. If they need the insulation, they'll, IEP will put it in at no cost to the homeowner. It's attic insulation only. Sign up. And the last thing on my agenda is that tentatively, we're going to be opening the compost area April 1st. Brian is working on a new compost area or a new type or whatever you want to call it. And right now, I stand, I will tell you this, that it will be strictly enforced because the whole area is, by the end of the week, will be completely cambered. We'll know who's going in and who isn't. So if you want to dump your garbage in there, you might have the garbage back on your front And the last thing is a budget modification, and I don't have the resolution. I believe the treasurer must, or is that that?
Clerk said you have it.
But all the...
It's not in my book.
It should be.
It should be, but it isn't.
Whereas the board of trustees deemed it advisable to make certain modifications to the 2009, 2010 village budget. It is therefore resolved and the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the village budget for fiscal year 2009, 2010. General fund appropriations, we are going to decrease by $183,534. We're also going to decrease our appropriated fund balance by $183,534. Under the water fund, water fund appropriations, decrease $78,924 and the appropriated fund balance decreases $78,924. Sewer fund appropriations, appropriations decrease $28,595. The appropriated fund balance decreases $28,595. Library appropriations, appropriations decrease $10,085 and the appropriated fund balance decreases $10,085. And all this decreasing is for moving money from one budget into the next budget. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'll make a motion to modify the budget modification resolution to change the budget.
Move seconded? Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, it's a roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And I believe that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. Just a couple items on my agenda tonight. The first item, request an executive session to discuss a utility customer. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Roll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
The second item on my agenda tonight is a discussion for the municipal electric meeting on April 28th or April 29th in East Syracuse, New York. The mayor will be going. Is anybody else on the board interested in going to that? I'll be out of town, so I can't go to it. Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to attend the meeting on April 28th or 29th and be the delegate for the village of Rouse's Point. I'll put that form of a motion.
Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by you to sign by.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And I, just one other quick item on my agenda. Last Friday night, trustee Baker, councilman Cooper and I were in Champlain for a shared services meeting. We have given reminders to the sewer department and the electric, the sewer department and the water department, and we're asking our department heads to go through our part of the shared services to make sure that the information is correct. On March 24th, there'll be another, excuse me, April 24th, there'll be another meeting to wrap up any of the loose ends or any of the items that are incorrect on the proposed shared services. I think it's very important for the village to do as much as we can to try to look to get more customers for our water, for our sewer. And again, this is part of the backup plan, also not knowing what's going to happen with Pfizer transition. And we didn't really have a lot of substance come out of the meeting the other day, but we're all on board and there's a few questions that we're going to run by the department heads. And, did you want to add anything to that, trustee Baker?
The plan they gave us didn't give any real answers.
Didn't have a lot of substance and it didn't seem like it was really...
Not for what we paid for the services. So we're going to make them rewrite it, go through our things, see what we don't like, what we like, and re-rate it.
We know that our water plant will have to be upgraded eventually, but the sewer part of it is fine. So, I mean, I always think the more customers the better when you're in business, so we're working on that. So that's all I have to report tonight, Mayor Rivers. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Burtz?
A couple items, the request an executive session to discuss from the force personnel.
Second. Move by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And the second item is to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for a progress hearing of Local Act Number 1 of the year 2010. Put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Just a quick...
Yes, just a quick thing. Um...I had some people in the village come to me, and they thought it was kind of weird the way we built the, uh... gazebo down here. So I thought the mayor did a pretty good job of explaining it, but maybe, again, I could just add that we had an opportunity to spend money, grant money. If we didn't spend it, we were going to lose it. So we formed a committee, and the committee spent a lot of time and came up some really good ideas, and we put this gazebo in the village. Now, we had a little bit of in-kind services from the village employees, but we're paying them anyways. So, you know, they had some downtime, and they did some work there to finish it up. And I think it's good for the village. It really didn't cost us anything, and the more things we can put in the village, the better. So I, I just wanted to explain that so people know about. This wasn't anything that we did behind closed doors, or they thought that we weren't following the rules, and we know the rules in the village, and I think, as far as I've been on the village board, we always follow the rules. So I ju- I just wanted to just cover that a little bit more, because some people thought it was kind of...I had people from the hardware store saying, "We didn't get a chance to bid on it." Well, yes, you did get a chance to bid on it. And, uh...that's basically what happened with the gazebo. It didn't really cost us enough money. It's just like fixing up your house and adding to your house. It just makes, it just makes it nicer house and makes the village nicer, so that's the reason I didn't get it. So that's all I wanted to say to that.
Okay, uh...any other discussion on local law 1? That is extending the village's problem. The zoning and planning on any projects that we do. Uh, when the zoning law was written several years ago, uh...that part did not get put into the local law, so to change it. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Got local law 2.
Local law 2.
Do you want me to authorize the third to publish a legal notice for a public hearing on local law number 2 of the year 2010?
Yeah. Seconded. Uh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just how come I feel that I've been left out again?
Came in late. It just all came in today.
Yeah.
This is, uh...just extending the moratorium on downtown that we've had in place. It runs out this way. Just extends it another year. With that, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Hey, John.
That's all I have, Johnny.
Trustee Baker.
No, I got someone. All right, any other?
Brian? You didn't do that resolution for the...
I have it right there on your agenda. I did put that mo...I did put that in form of a motion.
Well, we should do that separately so that we have, uh...
Supplemental?
We proved it to go, but we should have an additional resolution.
Under you. Okay. Trustee Baker? Uh, the only thing I have, that we're going to be shutting down the hockey arena in the next 2 weeks, end of the month. Taking the ice off, that's it. Thank you, trustee Baker.
Did they have a successful year? Did they have a successful year?
Yeah.
Good skating show the other night.
No complaints about the ice?
No, everybody was very pleased with building inside, insulation. We're very happy with the ice.
I forgot, I guess I grouped 2 things together. We need a motion to allow the mayor to be the delegate for the semi-annual...
You add in the motion.
That's what I thought.
I know, but it's separate as a resolution. I need it done as a motion in a...
Oh, okay. So you need a, uh...a motion to name the mayor as a delegate for the semi-annual meeting in Syracuse. Okay, so I'll make, put that in form of a motion.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burke's. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Uh, Carol?
Um, the only thing I have is that election is tomorrow. By the time anybody sees it, it probably will be all been done with, but...
Yeah, come vote from 00 until 9:00 p.m.
That's it.
Our sound? I don't have anything. Mr. Pelkey?
Yes, I just want to, uh...talk about the compost area again, that we're taking just leaves and grass and, uh...like garden debris. We're not taking brush at all till we have a meeting with the DEC to figure out what, what's going on with the burn ban. I just want to make that clear, that there's going to be no brush, just yard waste, grass, leaves.
We will be chipping brush. It's on the side of the road.
Right, on the spring cleanup. But, uh, April 1st, we're going to start, uh...sweeping the streets, so after the streets are swept, then we'll pick up the leaves.
How long is that going to run, Brian?
Uh...to sweep the village?
No, no, I mean, uh...pick another brush and stuff. Chip another brush.
We usually do it 1 week in the spring, 1 week in the fall. And that will be announced at a later date. Usually do it in May.
I always do the spring cleanup. It's the week, uh...before Mother's Day. Yeah.
So the stuff we cut off the trees and stuff you put by the side of the road, the small stuff, you'll chip in?
Right. But, uh...we're going to be doing our spring cleanup, the sand pickup, so we're, we want to get out there and get the sand picked up before people start putting bags and brush on the side of the road and...so...
Now, when the people, when the people start bringing their leaves to the compost pile, do you want the people to take those, the bag, the leaves out of the bags?
Yes.
Leave the bag. I think you should probably make that pretty clear.
Well, we're going to have signage. We talked today about putting signage.
New signage putting up.
Well, what we did is we, uh...we made 2 compost bays that we're trying to enclose so we can contain it and put signage, and the way we have the cameras set up, it's going to look right down into the compost base to see what they're putting in there and who's putting, at what time, and what they're putting in there.
So it's going to be clearly marked so that people...
Yes, there's going to be signage.
Bring bags there that they understand that they're not the leaves, because people are going to put their bags in their cars, they're going to bring them down.
Right.
Not everybody's got a truck.
Right. Just like before, no bags, I mean, and, uh...it will be clearly spelled out down there. If they have any questions, they can stop at the shop and talk to John, and the signage will be posted.
Some people have bushes that are not really...
No bushes.
No, but not, they're, they're flowers. Like I have Rosa regosas that aren't really bushes, but they're flowers that are very pinky. I guess it's kind of a bush, but it's, it's not a tree bush, it's a...
As long as it's not defined as a tree.
It's not a tree.
Yeah, if it's a, if, if it's like, uh...
The thing is, when you handle those things, they're, they're pretty pinky. You know, there, there's a lot of needles on them.
As long as it's compost material, that's what we're looking for.
It'll disintegrate if you cut it, because it's a hard stem.
Yeah. As long as it's comp...compost.
Want to make sure that I'm not penalized for, uh...from your camera system.
Well, if you have any questions, it's all you do is just stop and ask.
Is that right?
That's it.
Trustee Burke's? This is your last meeting, my boy. Please stand up. Throw in the towel. Are you all right? On behalf of the Village of Rosas Point, John, it's been a pleasure.